Okay, okay, that's on your lot too.
Call to order. And for those who haven't joined us before, welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Gulf Shores Planning Commission. Right now, it's for the month of September. Madam Secretary, would you give us a roll call?
Dean Long. Robert Steisfeld.
Here.
Frank Berlin.
Here.
Philip Harris.
Here.
Matt Young.
Here.
Jennifer Guthrie.
Here.
Keith Piccas.
Here.
Alan Young.
Here.
Billy Yube.
Here.
Clearly have a quorum. I'll make a note here about Dean. First item of business is the approval of the minutes from our last meeting. Someone offer a motion?
I saw a move, go ahead.
Please.
I saw a movement, Chairman, to approve the minutes of the August 24th meeting.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for acceptance. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
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 Mel, you got that? We'll start this afternoon with a public hearing. Titled subdivision regulation amendment. I'm going to ask that something be changed slightly when we get so far in the text. I would just feel better about it if you see when I get to it.
Alright, good afternoon, Commission. Your first item today is an amendment to the subdivision regulations. The City of Gulf Shores is proposing to amend the subdivision regulations by adding a certificate to Appendix A for E-911 GIS addressing. So currently, in our subdivision process, Baldwin County E-911 approves the proposed street names for new subdivisions. An applicant will submit a list of the proposed street names to E-911. E-911 will review those against the street names that are currently within Baldwin County and either approve or deny. And then the applicant can just keep submitting street names until they get one that's not already taken. And then after they have received approval, then staff receives a list of those proposed street names from the applicant. And again, duplicate street names within the county are not allowed, which is why we go through this process. So what we are proposing now is, in order to verify the accuracy of proposed subdivisions, E-911 will have a more in-depth review of our proposed plats. So they will get a copy of our plats and perform a review to ensure that street segments are correctly identified, spelled, and labeled on the proposed subdivision plat. And in order to verify that the plat has been reviewed and approved by E-911, a new certificate of approval is proposed to be added to Appendix A of the subdivision regulations. So our proposed amendment, the certificate to be added should read as follows. It will be added to Appendix A, certificate of approval by E-911 GIS addressing. The undersigned as authorized by Baldwin County E-911 Board hereby approves the road names as depicted on the map within plat and hereby approves the within plat for the recording of same in the probate office of Baldwin County, Alabama, gives the day, month, and year, and a place for the authorized representative to sign. This verbiage was provided to me by Scott, who is, Scott Warner, who is the current GIS and addressing manager for E-911. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the amendment to the subdivision regulations as proposed.
Anybody up here have a question? For staff?
Are they doing this throughout Baldwin County?
They are. They are. I think the City of Foley has just added this to their subdivision regulations.
I'd really want to clarify, because it may not be totally understood. Can folks hear me, by the way? That the subdivision regulations and thereto any kind of amendments that go with it are a function of the Planning Commission and strictly the Planning Commission. In this instance, the City of Gulf Shores is requesting that we do what you've heard explained, and I don't have any difficulties with that. I do want to make sure of what I just cited, and that is the fact that this is action that is through the auspices of the Planning Commission itself. So in your summary of requests, Mel, in that first part, you may be able to get it into the certificate, but right now we read, summary of requests and so forth, City of Gulf Shores proposes so forth and so on. I want to change that slightly from summary of request, request. Let me get myself straight here. The City of Gulf Shores requests the Planning Commission amend the subdivision regulations by adding a certificate to Appendix A for E-911 GIS addressing. Everybody alright with that? We're not setting any fires or anything anyplace, are we? Now with that being the case, whoever makes a motion, I'd appreciate that they include that phrase. Or at least make reference to it.
I'll make a motion that we approve application SDR 2021-01 with condition, excuse me, Chairman Steisfeld.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for approval as we just discussed. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Thank you for backing me up. Two Lakes RV Subdivision Preliminary Plat, Mr. Bauer.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Chairman Steisfeld and the Planning Commission members. This is application number ZA 2142, Two Lakes RV Park Preliminary Subdivision Plat. The request is to, for preliminary plat approval for a 45 lot RV park subdivision. The property is located at 5651 Roscoe Road, and it's currently zoned RV2 by Baldwin County. So it's not located in the city limits of Gulf Shores. Got a couple location maps on the screen for you. The left-hand side map shows the proposed location as it relates to the city limits of Gulf Shores. The map on the right shows the specific location off of Roscoe Road. It's, again, it's in part of Baldwin County. It's not part of the city limits of Gulf Shores. It is located in our planning jurisdiction, pretty much surrounded on all sides by vacant, mostly vacant wooded property with a lot of it zoned, I think rural. A little, a little bit about what authority is granted to the Planning Commission to review this application, and also some history of the annexation and boundary line agreement the City of Gulf Shores has with the City of Orange Beach. In 2006, the City of Gulf Shores and the City of Orange Beach both passed resolutions establishing where each of our different municipality city limits would end, and it also established kind of the boundaries and the planning jurisdiction between the two cities. So for, in this instance, when a subdivision lies outside of the City of Gulf Shores, but is within our planning jurisdiction and also is part of zoned Baldwin County, the stricter of the two regulations apply. Basically what that means is the City of Gulf Shores Planning Commission has to review and approve or disapprove a subdivision as well as a Baldwin County Planning Commission, and the stricter of the two regulations apply. In terms of Gulf Shores regulations, the, we review this versus the most comparable zoning district. If this property were to be annexed into the city, that zoning district in this case, because it's zoned RV2 by Baldwin County, is R5, which is Mobile Home and RV Park Zoning District. And then again, due to the location of this property within our planning jurisdiction, our review is primarily focused on the subdivision regulations, because that's really the only authority that the Planning Commission has granted in terms of the review of this development. Have a map there on the screen. It shows the blue area is the City of Gulf Shores city limits. The orange is Orange Beach city limits. The blue hashed area is our planning jurisdiction, and the orange hashed area is the City of Orange Beach, Beach's planning jurisdiction. A little blow up of that same map shows the proposed development highlighted in the red dash line. Then again, you can see that it's in our planning jurisdiction and kind of how it lays out in accordance with our city limits. Also, you can see the City of Orange Beach city limits and property right across the street from this location. Here are the existing conditions of the property. It's a 39 acre property. The upland portion of the property has been cleared, so there are no trees or anything on the upland portion of the property. All the wetlands remain wooded. Those wetlands will be preserved in the natural state as well as the vegetated areas to the west of the wetlands. Little background, on August 17th of 2021, the Baldwin County Commission rezoned the property from B3 General Business to RV2 Recreational Vehicle Park Zoning District. Our land use plan classifies this as low-density residential. Again, the zoning is Baldwin County RV2. The purpose of this district is to establish a zoning designation for low-density recreational vehicle parks. The RV2 district permits RV uses as well as accessory uses and structures by right. The minimum lot size of the Baldwin County RV2 zoning district is 1,600 square feet. Here is a diagram of the proposed development. Its phase one is located on 23 of the 39 acres. The use is restricted to Class A or Super C RVs, fifth wheels, no less than 34 feet, travel trailers and park model trailers, which include living quarters. There's also a restriction in their bylaws that all of the units must be 15 years or less in age. They do allow optional cottages in addition to an RV on each lot. Proposed number of lots is 45 lots. This would be phase one of the development. The overall development's proposed to have 109 lots. Dwelling units per acre is 1.9 units. All of the 45 lots are accessed by private road, which is to be known as Twin Lake Circle. We have gotten approval from the Baldwin County 911 Department. They've approved the Twin Lake Circle name. The largest lot within the subdivision is 3,613 square feet. The smallest lot is 3,200 square feet. Setbacks will be 10 feet in the front, 10 feet in the rear, and 5 feet on the side yards. Minimum lot width is 40 feet. Open space equates to 78% of the 23 acres. The usable open space is 13%. It will provide amenities in phase one consisting of a clubhouse with laundry facilities, a swimming pool, and a pickleball court. You can see how the development lays out on the right-hand side of the screen. Area and dimensional regulations. Twin Lakes RV subdivision complies with the R5 area and dimensional regulations of the City of Gulf Shores. Again, the access to development will be provided by a private 50-foot roadway. A temporary turnaround is provided at the end of the Twin Lake Circle. It can be extended upon development of phase two of the subdivision. Private roads are typically not allowed for properties in the City of Gulf Shores unless they're located in a planned unit development or a cottage subdivision. Because this development is located outside the City of Gulf Shores, private streets are allowed if approved by the Planning Commission. Open space, 78% of the development, 13% is usable open space. Again, the open space includes a clubhouse, a pickleball court, and swimming pools. Landscape and tree preservation. The developed portion of the site has been previously cleared. All of the vegetation within the wetlands will be preserved. The landscape plans have been submitted and approved, or they are in compliance with the subdivision regulations. Primarily, they show landscaping, street trees along the roadways. They've got three trees every 100 feet around the Detentin Pond. They've also have a landscape buffer with six-foot privacy fence along Roscoe Road. Sidewalks, six feet wide sidewalks are provided within the private street right-of-way. These sidewalks connect all of the lots to the common facilities within the development as well as out to Roscoe Road. The applicant has submitted an engineer's estimate in the cost of $38,325, which has been approved by the City Engineering Department, and they will pay a fee in lieu of constructing the required sidewalk along Roscoe Road. Lighting plan has been submitted and approved in compliance with the city regulations. Both the City Engineering Department and Fire Marshal have approved the plans as submitted. That staff recommends approval of the preliminary subdivision plat with four conditions. A traffic impact study shall be submitted with phase two of the Two Lakes RV Park. Condition number two, conduits for the future telephone, cable, and internet service shall be installed within the street right-of-way prior to final subdivision plat approval. Number three is regarding the $38,325 fee in lieu of constructing a sidewalk along Roscoe Road. That shall be submitted prior to the issuance of a land service permit. And number four, covenants and restrictions indicating the maintenance of the roads will be adequately and continuously financed by assessments against the adjoining properties and administered through the homeowners association shall be submitted prior to final plat approval. It's worth noting that the applicant did submit homeowners association covenants and restrictions and bylaws. We just need to make sure that that specific financing of the roadways is within those documents. I didn't see that it was specifically referenced in the documents. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody up here have a question for staff?
I have a couple. Andy, on the, who manages the site disturbance permits? Is that county issued land disturbance permit and oversight on tree removal and land clearing?
It's a great question. Normally, in the past, we have kind of jointly administered those, but I believe with the passage of the new, recent bill through the House, it will be administered by the county of Baldwin County, because a lot of our regulations are not applicable any longer.
Okay, and on the traffic study that will be required for phase two, does that fall under city jurisdiction as far as the guidelines for any improvements that may be needed at that time? Or will that defer back to the county as well?
And Mark can help me here, but I would, I believe because we have regulations within our subdivision, we have specific traffic regulations in our subdivision regulations, that we would have the authority to require any improvements on that roadway.
We, we, we would have as far as like review and approval authority on the traffic improvements, and then because it is a county road, a county maintained road, they would have authority over the actual construction, no recite over the construction. Does it have to be dealt with their specifications?
I'm just thinking of the potential future connection to the spur road going to the expressway and the improvements that will need to be made there, and then all that gets coordinated with the state. Last question, the fence at Roscoe, a six-foot privacy fence, does that fence meet the subdivision regulations of our standard fence design with the intermediate columns and the height of the fence and all?
Yes, it is designed with columns every, can't remember if it's 25 or 50 feet, but it does meet the subdivision regulations.
Okay, thank you.
Can you clarify, sorry, can you clarify, Andy, for me, the clearing of that property? Was this these current owners, was that under previously the jurisdiction of Gulf Shores?
You've been bringing it to the state that it's in today.
The state that it's currently in right now. It looks like they purchased that recently, but that's just been cleared. There would have been trees there before, so who would have been responsible for getting that permit to clear that?
I, I would have to double check, but I believe the applicant's here also, but that our tree protection regulations did not apply outside of the city limits. I know they, I know they don't.
Okay.
In terms of exactly when it was cleared, the applicant's representative can answer that question.
Well, if it's not under our jurisdiction, then no concern.
Okay.
Does the applicant or his representative wish to address the issue? If you can. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Lee with Lee Engineering Company. I'm here on behalf of the owner. So this, this project has changed dramatically since we first did it. So back in 2019, it was submitted to Baldwin County as an RV park only, no subdivision. We went through the site review process with Baldwin County, and they approved the subsequent site plan. And they don't have any tree ordinances or tree protection items. So we moved forward with that project, and they started the land clearing and everything else. And then the owner put the project on hold because he wanted to do the subdivision part of it. So we, we let it sit for a while, and while we re-engineered the whole thing and got the approvals from Baldwin County, and now we're back here to get the approval from y'all for the subdivision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Anybody have a question for this gentleman?
Is this in our police and fire jurisdiction? Would be, is it in our police and fire jurisdiction?
As far as I know, yes, sir.
Might you elaborate just what can be done as far as these cottages in addition to the space that's taken up by the RV? And those are permanent cottages?
Yes, sir. It would be like, there's a couple other ones in town. I don't know if you're familiar with them. I think Belatera is one of them, and I believe Osprey has some of those. They're, they're kind of amenities to each individual lot. You would come with your RV, but if you don't want to stay in the RV, you could go to this cottage house.
Small little house next to it.
Absolutely. And so the owner has the option to build one on his property if he wishes.
But according to Chris, you have to have an RV there. You can't have a...
Correct. It won't be just, you won't just show up and stay in the cottage itself. I mean, you, you would come with your RV and park your RV on the spot to stay in the cottage if, if you wished, so.
Are we familiar with anything similar where it is the homeowners association that's responsible for enforcement of the things that are described here?
I mean...
How well has that worked?
Honestly, in reading through their covenants and restrictions, they're very similar to a traditional single-family house subdivision covenants and restrictions. A lot of what the language in there is, a lot of what I've noticed in single-family subdivisions, to be honest with you. So I would assume that as long as the homeowners association is active, that typically has worked pretty well.
Such things as who knows how active they are. Who's going to monitor that? I'm just speaking rhetorically. I'm not asking for anybody's name. Have you had other developments where you have used that tactic, and has it worked out well for you?
Honestly... This is a, this is a unique one for me with that. But as far as the way it would operate, I would assume, well, I mean, I assume is a bad word. I would, it would be very typical of a standard subdivision where each individual lot has its own, you know, you have each individual lots, and everybody has dues and fees, and there's, the covenants and restrictions. Make sure that everybody keeps their yards up and, and all the rules that are set by the architectural committees and everything would be taken care of through that.
Well, if I had a concern, that would be it.
Right.
And it won't show up in the first year or two either.
Unfortunately, true.
Is this the first subdivision like this that we're approving, like this?
Well, we approved, you guys approved one just south of here, a few years back, Sugar Sands RV Park. I think initially it started off as a RV development where they were not subdividing the property, then maybe operated for a year, then it came back in as a subdivision. They subdivided the property into individual lots, so...
Did they build cottages down there too?
There may be some cottages in there.
There are some cottages.
But as far as I know, upkeep-wise, I think that the appearance of that RV park still looks really nice.
I would, I would think it'd be managed much like a condo, because you're going to have absentee owners. So my guess is that the association would probably pay a property manager.
We're not dealing with a, with a pop-up on the back of a pickup truck. We're dealing with Class A and...
Yes, sir.
Big, absolutely.
And, and, and the developer is also going to have a lot of skin in the game too, because you face two is coming down the road, could be next year, it could be five years. So he's, he's going to want to make sure that it's, it's upkept for his future product.
Thank you.
Was the purpose of the subdivision to have individual ownership? Is that the vehicle to get the individual ownership of these lots?
Yes.
Okay.
Question, anyone else? Got another question. When, when will the fence be going in all the way around?
Roscoe, is it just going down Roscoe?
Right, I believe it's going to go just down Roscoe. Yes, sir.
And then with that, do you know when will it happen with phase one, or?
If it be the commission's wish to make that a contingency, we can make it happen for you.
I think also with that, I would like to see if they're going to do that, that landscaping go all the way down to, through phase two, just because if not, you're going to have lopsided landscaping. If it ends up being two years, you know, you're going to have small bushes, trees, and then you're going to have some larger ones most likely. Hopefully that's not the case, but I definitely would like to see that as a condition if we so choose to approve it.
Well, it's got some direction from staff if we might.
Is that, is that possible?
I think you could make that a condition, certainly.
What about the amenities, the pool, clubhouse? Will that be built first before anything is, and then what we require people to do?
I think typically, as long as it goes along with the first phase.
And if I may, the clubhouse and the pool will be built in the first phase.
This is a candidate for a public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to address this issue? Sir, if you come to the microphone so that they can hear us over the internet. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Eric Carney. I live off Berkowski Lane, so that's just adjacent to the property. That property... That property butts up to the backside of my property, so I think the wetlands, there probably won't be anything built on the backside of mine. But the concern I have is the zoning, so I pretty much enjoy having a rural zoning with, uh, ag. Because I do grow some stuff back there, I have, you know, uh, animals and stuff like that. So, uh, nothing, you know, no, no kind of bad animals there. But, uh, but I do have that property and I bought that property specifically for those reasons. So, I know, I heard in here something about potential zoning for city, uh, that does scare me a bit. Will that, or can that affect me in the future, uh, is what I'm concerned about, off Berkowski Lane.
Andy, can you clarify?
So, the zoning right now is controlled by Baldwin County. The city has no authority over the zoning because it's not inside the city limits of Gulf Shores. Potentially what you heard is if they were to annex into the city, so currently there are RV two, which is an RV zoning district in Baldwin County. If they annex into the city, they would come in as the most comparable zoning district, which is RV Park and Mobile Home Subdivision, R five in the city. So, it really, the zoning that wouldn't necessarily change all that much between the county and the city. That's only if they were to annex, right now they can't annex because they don't touch the city limits. It would take, take other people to annex for them to be able to annex.
Okay, because there is some nice hunting property and stuff like that back there, so I want to make sure none of that stuff's disturbed either. Um, I know the wetlands protect some of that as well, but that's part of the rural, um, appeal to it that I liked, um, and why I bought there. Uh, so, and then the second part was with the RV five scares me as well. Does not sound like, sounds like it's going to be a great place. But is there any kind of protocol in there to stop like mobile homes and those type of structures from being in there? Or is it, is there something in there that states that it cannot be a mobile home in safe areas to?
Again, it's a Baldwin County zoning district, I don't have their zoning ordinance with me, but from what I recall, mobile homes are not allowed in the RV two zoning district.
Right.
Risk of baby...
That's correct, mobile home is not allowed onsite, so, you know, they'd have to get it rezoned if you haven't, which they're not going to be able to get them.
That's what I like to hear. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Apparently no one else is wishing to speak this afternoon to this item. Let us close the hearing and move on. If there aren't any questions, someone can offer a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve Z A two-one dash zero 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 four two with condition from staff and that the landscaping buffer and private fence go down Roscoe, parallel to Roscoe, even covering the phase two section.
Second.
We will motion in a second for approval, if there's any other comment or question, all in favor say aye.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is there anyone opposed? Get our act together. Waterways one oh one site plan, and this is also a conditional use permit.
Yes, sir, this is application Z A twenty-one fifty-one, Waterways one zero one site plan conditional use permit. The applicant seeks site plan approval to develop a single fam- seven single-family cottages on a point three seven acre parcel of land located at one zero one east twenty-second avenue. Got the two locations maps on the screen, uh, the location map on the left shows that it's, property's located kind of in the heart of the city, just a few blocks south of the intercoastal waterway. The location map on the right shows the specific location of this property at one zero one east twenty-second avenue. Uh, directly to the west of this property is the highway fifty-nine bridge. Directly to the east are Bridgeway condominiums, which is a multi-family development, I think they've got thirteen units there. To the south are Baywhistle Apartments, and to the north is the Gulf Avenue right-of-way and also right-of-way associated with the uh, intercoastal waterway bridge. It's currently zoned R four. Existing conditions, a lot, uh, is cleared and grassed, has been that way for many years now. The top photos show Bridgeway condominiums to the east of the property and then the intercoastal waterway bridge to the, directly to the west of this property. There are no trees on the property. Little background, um, this is within the Waterway Village Overlay District. In two thousand twelve is when the city adopted the Waterway Village District Overlay Regulations. Uh, as all of you, or most of you know, Waterway Village is a specific neighborhood plan that utilizes form-based codes. Uh, the purpose of the plan is encourage this area of Gulf Shores to develop into a walkable mixed-use downtown district and to create a district that strength, strengthens the ties between the larger residential areas to the west and east of Waterway Village. Uh, form-based codes are a little bit different than traditional zoning. Traditional zoning typically is focused, uh, a lot on the use of the property. Whereas form-based codes are focused more on the built environment and trying to achieve a specific development pattern. Um, the future land use of the plan, uh, is commercial, mixed-use. Mixed-use development is encouraged by the City of Gulf Shores. Mixed-use can be vertically placed on the property, so you could have an office on the first floor and residential above or retail on the first floor, or residential above. Or it can be placed horizontally where you have, like, kind of like this property, you've got, uh, single-family how, you know, seven single-family houses located on a property that will serve the commercial uses surrounding it. Uh, again, the property is current zoning is R four. The R four district exists for the protection of areas that are planned to be developed for high-density attached housing in central locations in the community. It's also, uh, the regulating plan in the wa- of the Waterway Village Overlay District is T four. The T four district, the purpose of that is to evolve and transform this area into a multi-family district. Also, it's, uh, to complement and reinforce and tran- and transition from the commercial uses located along the intercoastal waterway and East Second Street. And then the physical form of the development within the T four district shall be architecturally scaled to complement the character of nearby commercial areas and to add to the pedestrian-oriented nature of the district. So, even though this is seven single-family houses, it is classified as a multi-family development. It just takes the form of se- seven single-family houses. So, here's the proposed site plan on the right side of the screen with the site data on the left-hand side. Again, it's a just over sixteen thousand square foot property. The dwelling units per acre allowed is twenty, they're proposing eighteen point nine. Building height allowed is four stories, they're proposing two-story houses. Building coverage, the maximum allowed is twenty-five percent, they're proposing thirty-one percent. Impervious surface coverage, maximum allowed is seventy percent, they propose thirty-seven percent. Uh, front setback is a little different in the Waterway Village District. A lot of times we'll have minimum and maximum front, side, rear setbacks. So, in this instance, there's a ten-foot minimum front setback and a fifteen-foot maximum front setback. They're proposing a ten-foot front setback. The rear setback is a five-feet minimum setback, they propose four-feet minimum rear setback. They also have interior side yard setbacks and street side yard setbacks. So, for the interior side of the property, which is the east property line, there's a zero-foot minimum and a zero-foot maximum setback. The applicant proposes twenty feet, uh, set the single-family houses back twenty feet off the property line. And then the sides, s- s- street side yard setback, which will be along the, uh, highway fifty-nine bridge. The requirements are five feet minimum and ten-foot maximum, the applicant proposes twenty feet. Minimum landscaping is twenty percent of the site, they propose thirty-two percent. Uh, the parking required is seven spaces and they provide fifteen spaces, ten of those are on the site. Five spaces within the east twenty-second avenue right-of-way. So, you can see this, how the seven houses are laid out on the property, they've got a common area running down the middle of the property with some benches and landscaping in that area. Two access points to east twenty-second avenue are on both the east and west sides of the development. So, we have a, uh, I guess a year or two ago, we added a section to our zoning ordinance that allows for deviations when a property is located in, in an overlay district. And again, this is located in the Waterway Village Overlay District, and the applicant does request a couple or three deviations from the underlying zoning standards. Uh, the planning commission and city council can approve those deviations if they're found to comply with goals and the goals and intent of the future land use plan. And the specific prod- process for deviations, they have to follow the conditional use permit process, which requires planning commission and city council approval. So, the three, uh, deviations that they are requesting, the T fours in Waterway Village Overlay District only allows one principal building on the lot. And as indicated, they propose to build seven single-family houses on the lot. Second deviation is, again, there are minimum and maximum setbacks in the T four district. They propose to vary from the minimum rear yard setback, the interior and street side yard setbacks. Then the third deviation is related to the underlying R four zoning. The underlying R four zoning, uh, restricts the building coverage to twenty-five percent of the property. And Waterways one oh one proposes a building coverage of thirty-one percent. And all three of these instances, we're really starting to see an uptick in developments that are willing to, uh, propose in the Waterway Village Overlay District. So, even though this was approved, when I say in two thousand twelve, we really haven't had a much of a chance to utilize those regulations. It's more, the, the deviations are more related to cha- changes and modifications we need to make to the Waterway Village Regulations as opposed to this project not fitting the goals and intent of the Waterway Village Overlay District and the goals and intent of the future land use plan. So, we're going to, as we review projects within the Waterway Village District, we're going to keep track of some of these changes that we need, need to make. And, uh, sometime in the near future, we'll probably come back with a zoning tax amendment as we've started using the Waterway Village Regulations to make some modifications to that zoning district. So, city staff does support all three of the applicant's deviation requests. The request further the goal of developing the property, the compact pedestrian frien- friendly housing option, makes use of a vacant property and will provide additional residence to, uh, support the commercial areas within Waterway Village Overlay District. This development, we strongly believe can become a catalyst for future development and redevelopment within the Waterway Village Overlay District. This really fits well with the cottage-type housing, because there's a lot of existing cottages in that location. And then residential infill in the, in walkable areas make better, more efficient, uh, use of the city infrastructure and resources. Uh, so here's an example of the proposed building architecture. The proposal is for three three-bedroom units and four two-bedroom units, will be two-story houses. Will have metal roofs and hardy-lap siding. Uh, the proposed architecture and floor plans do comply with the minimum ground story height and upper story height as required by the Waterway Village Overlay District. Uh, future land use policy, uh, has several goals that are furthered by this development. An implementation opportunity listed in the land use plans to continue to promote and attract investment partners, both public and private for Waterway Village. This development endorses that goal. Uh, the proposed development achieves the stated goals of the future land use plan by providing seven residential units to support the commercial uses within Waterway Village. It complies with the zoning of the property. Again, it's zoned R four and, uh, underlying zoning of R four and the overlay zoning of T four. Both of those are multi-family zoning districts and of course, they're posing a multi-family, all, you know, type of product, even though they're all single-family houses. Again, there's two access connect, access is connecting the development to east twenty-second avenue. The access drives are pavement, they will utilize gravel inside the site. The Waterway Village Regulations promote the use of pervious paving, so, uh, staff is supportive of that request. Parking, um, a, a kind of a unique feature to Waterway Village for certain types of uses, which this is one that qualifies. The Waterway Village Regulations restrict the parking to fifty percent of the normal parking, uh, normal required parking regulations. So, instead of fifteen spaces or fourteen spaces, this, uh, proposed development is required only seven spaces. Uh, they do provide ten on-sites, onsite parking spaces and five parking spaces within the east twenty-second avenue. Uh, the Waterway Village Overlay District specifically allows parking within the right-of-way to count towards the development's parking if it's located adjacent to the development. Some of those onsite parking are tandem spaces and typically for single-family housing, tandem spaces are allowed by the zoning ordinance. Landscaping in open, open space, Waterway Village does, uh, provide an exemption for landscaping, uh, in, in the district. The only landscape provisions that apply in the Waterway Village District are the landscape provisions for parking lot landscaping, which would be typically, uh, a large parking lot, like, lot like you see at Acme or Tackey Jacks. This really doesn't have much of a parking lot, but the applicant has gone over and above the minimum requirements. They do provide landscaping on the front, a portion of the size in the rear of the development. Landscape plans do comply with the, uh, minimum landscape requirements of the zoning ordinance. Actually, they exceed the minimum landscape requirements. Again, thirty-two percent of the proposed plan is open space, that meets a minimum requirement of twenty percent. A common area is provided between the four houses at the rear of the development. Common area is designed with benches and brick-paver sidewalks that connect all the units together and with the proposed sidewalk along and within east second, east twenty-second avenue, that's the type of... Tree protection not applicable, there are no trees on the property. The drainage plans have been reviewed and approved by the city engineer. Uh, they do propose some exterior lighting, they've got four eighteen-foot tall lights provided in the parking areas and two twelve-foot lo- tall parking, or tall lights provided in the common area. All the lights are full cutoff as required by the zoning ordinance. Trash collection, the applicant has received a letter indicating that the site can be serviced with rollout trash containers and the fire, fire marshal and engineering department have reviewed and approved the site plan. Staff recommends approval of the Waterways one oh one site plan slash CUP with two conditions. The design of the parking spaces and street scape along east twenty-second avenues shall match the layout provided in Article eleven Waterway Village Overlay District thoroughfare assemblies of the zoning ordinance. And number two, the correct setbacks for the houses shall be listed in the site data table. A rear, rear yard of four feet, street side yard of twenty feet, interior side yard of twenty feet. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Andy, restate whether it's going to be gravel versus paved.
So, the gravel will be on the property itself. The drive aisles, where they are within the east twenty-second avenue, they will be paved. And that's a typical, typical requirement when pervious paving is allowed, um, anything within the right-of-way has to be paved.
By the structures.
I'm sorry?
Where parking is alongside of the structures is tandem parking.
It's gravel.
Andy?
Yes, sir.
Uh, you got seven houses going in here and seven parking spaces, is that going to be enough parking? I know you got the overflow.
You've got, so, the minimum required is seven spaces, there, they've got...
One car per house?
They have ten spaces onsite with five spaces located in the east twenty-second avenue right-of-way. So, they'll technically have two spaces per house, which is...
Yeah.
That's the normal requirement for a single-family house.
And of course, there's no short-term rentals permitted, is that correct?
The applicant does not want short-term rentals, they want to only have this property as, what I understand, as long, for long-term rentals.
But that would have to be part of their CUP request if they wanted to short-term.
Right. They could, they could do it through a CUP application, but I've specifically asked him and he said at this point he's not interested, interested in short-term rentals, only long-term rentals.
Because if it goes to short-term rentals, then you're gonna see more than two cars per house coming. I can see, yeah, as we have the problem now with houses with, you know, people bring, everybody brings a car. And you don't have very much parking here. That's all I'm, that's all, that's my only concern. I like the project, but.
Question as well. Andy, with this, maybe I missed it in the site plan. Are each one of these homes handicap accessible?
That typically handicap accessibility review of that is at the building permit stage. Normally, that doesn't come up at, at the site plan review.
Well, I just see from a parking standpoint, with gravel parking, that may be somewhat challenging for someone who's handicapped to be able to purchase one of these homes.
But the walkways are pavers, are they not?
Well, they are.
The walkways are brick pavers and then there's a sidewalk within the, will be a sidewalk within the twenty-second avenue.
Being used for a walkway.
Yeah, no, just thinking if they're getting out of their car where it's parked at, would it be accessible? I just didn't see anything, I just wanna make sure before we approve gravel to be their driveway, that that's being taken into consideration.
If they, if we had a individual that wanted to purchase and build an ADA accessible house, or Brandon's department reviewed the actual plans, then we would simply, they needed an ADA accessible parking space, they would concrete that particular parking space and make an ADA accessible. It'd be retrostated fairly easily if it has continues to be a sidewalk.
Is the fifty percent parking reduction in the entire overlay district, or does that apply only to residential?
It applies to everything with the exception of lodging uses and restaurants.
I thought there was another provision where restaurants and lodging had to, they, they were only required to put fifty percent onsite, but had to purchase the other fifty percent within the district of the, of the parking lots that were provided in the district.
I think, I think they could either only fifty percent onsite or purchase it or build it in the right-of-way. I think that's the way that, I think that's the way it works.
Anyone else up here? This is a public hearing, anyone wish to address this issue? Sounds good to me. Let's move along. Someone consider offering a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we, that we accept application ZA two-one-zero-zero-zero-five-one Waterway 101 site plan CUP as presented.
Second.
We go motion in a second, any other cam or question? All in favor, say yea.
Yea.
Is there anyone opposed?
Chairman, I'm gonna recuse myself from this next item, please.
Bill, catch that. This is a site plan. So it won't be a public hearing. And who's got it? Jennifer?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, your site plan item today is a request to construct a four thousand square foot building on a lot located on West Second Street across from Midtown Gulf Shores. The subject lot is twenty-two thousand four hundred and thirty-four square feet, which is about a half acre, and is zoned neighborhood business. The subject lot is noted there in the yellow, and you can see that Midtown Gulf Shores is across the street. Existing conditions, the lot fronts on West Second Street. The lot contains fifty-eight protected trees. And this lot does have an ingress egress easement along the Summer Trace Apartment driveway, which was provided via the original re-subdivision of the parent lot, which was Lot One of Hunter's Heights. The surrounding context to the north is zoned BN, it's undeveloped and heavily wooded. To the south is Summer Trace Apartments driveway, which is high-density multifamily residential R-four and single-family homes zoned BN that are located along Oleander Cove. To the east is PUD, a planned unit development, Midtown Gulf Shores. And to the west, again, you have Summer Trace Apartments. Now, this is a picture, a view of the lot from West Second Street. And this provides you a picture of the unique feature of this property, which is the stand of sand live oaks that are located within the southeast corner of the lot. And on there, you can see some of those trees have the little pink tags on them. And those are the trees that have been tagged to be saved by the applicant. There's a view from West Second Street and a view of the trees to be preserved along the apartment driveway. Little background on this, this subdivision may look familiar to you. This was recently a subdivision that you approved, West Second Street subdivision. It was a non-residential and mixed-use subdivision, and our subject lot is Lot One. Denoted there in the red. All right, so we have, again, a four thousand square foot building proposed for general office use. The building height is one story. Building coverage is seventeen point eight-six percent and pervious coverage forty point seven-eight percent. The setbacks proposed are twenty feet from the front. The rear is one hundred and fifty-nine feet and ten feet on each side. The applicant is providing forty-five point eight-three percent landscape area. And they are providing twenty vehicle parking spaces and four bicycle spaces. The site plan does meet the area and dimensional requirements of the BN zoning district. Future land use plan designates this as medium-density residential. General office does not comply with this designation. So staff will be reviewing and providing a recommendation to this board to update the future land use plan within this area of the city accordingly. Zoning, neighborhood business is intended to provide a transitional buffer between commercial industrial activities and nearby residential neighborhoods. Non-residential uses are limited to those that can be compatible with the residential character of adjacent neighborhoods. General office use is allowed by right within the neighborhood business zoning district. All right, some of the specifics of the plan. You have a vehicular entrance from the existing drive of the Summer Trace Apartments. A pedestrian sidewalk connection from the building connects to the existing drive. And the applicant is proposing a six-foot sidewalk along West Second Street. Would like to indicate that the proposed internal sidewalk connecting to the existing drive allows for the preservation of the, the sand live oaks in the previous pictures. Those will be able to remain with that sidewalk connecting to the drive. If the sidewalk were to go down the side property line, then those trees would not be able to be preserved. Parking, we have twenty spaces provided, which are calculated from the gross floor area of the building. The drive aisles and parking spaces are designed in accordance with Article fourteen of the zoning ordinance. The drive aisles are proposed to be asphalt and the parking spaces are proposed to be pervious concrete. This is a rendering of the proposed architecture. Again, the building is one story. The applicant is proposing horizontal lap siding and brick veneer. And the proposed architecture complies with the BN zoning district architectural building material regulations. All right, our tree protection plan. So we have nine protected trees to be preserved. Those are noted with the green circles, as you can see, in the southeast corner of the property. Thirty-four protected trees are to be removed within the building and the parking lot. Those are the little blue squares. And those trees are not required to be remediated or replanted per the tree removal ordinance or tree preservation ordinance, excuse me. Fifteen trees, protected trees are to be removed that do require replacement and remediation, and those are shown with the red X's. Non-residential developments do have an opportunity to earn tree credits. Those tree credits are earned through the number of preserved trees that are being, or excuse me, protected trees that are being preserved and the required trees that are to be planted based on Article twelve of the zoning ordinance. So the final cost of remediation, if required, will be determined by the city once a land disturbing activity permit is submitted. So a land disturbing permit and a building permit do trigger a site inspection for the trees. The city arborist will use the tree protection plan during the site inspection to locate the trees that are proposed to be removed. Now, once the city arborist goes onsite, some of the trees that you see here that are indicated to be removed could be categorized as leaning, in danger of falling, damaged or injured, and therefore would not require remediation or replacement. So that in turn could reduce the remediation total that's provided on your tree protection plan. So the onsite inspection is a more accurate process than just solely relying on the tree protection plan that's provided during your site plan application. So you have the landscape plan here that meets the minimum requirements of Article twelve. The applicant, again, does earn tree credits for each of the proposed three inch caliper trees to be planted. Those credits are subtracted from the total number of protected tree calipers to be removed. Drainage, you can see there on the plan in the blue, the stormwater pond is added to the rear of the property. The parking lot is designed to sheet flow and then collect water within an underground system that will empty into the stormwater pond. Exterior lighting, the applicant's proposing for parking lot lights that comply with Article six dash twelve of the zoning ordinance. Trash will be collected via rollout containers. And those containers will not be allowed to be placed along West Second Street for servicing. I did receive a collection letter from the trash service, so I don't think that's gonna be an issue. The fire marshal has provided a phased approval. And the engineering department has reviewed and approved the site plan and the stormwater calculations report. All right, staff recommends approval of RE/MAX Gulf Shore site plan with the following conditions. You will notice there I have added a third condition, if you want, want to go ahead and just scribble that down in your notes. I'll read through one and two. First condition is the rollout trash container cannot be placed along West Second Street for servicing. Number two, the future land use plan shall be reviewed by staff and a recommendation provided to the planning commission to update the future land use plan within this area of the city accordingly. And the additional condition is number three. The final cost of remediation for removal of protected trees will be determined by the city and shall be paid prior to the issuance of a land disturbing permit or building permit. All right.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Anybody up here have a question for staff?
I do have a question. Jennifer, regarding the first condition, so what does that mean? They have to put their rollout trash can on the entrance street, not?
Yes.
Okay. And do they have approval to service that? Is that serviceable or?
Yes, I have the required trash layer from the utilities that says that they can service this, this property.
Thank you.
The front of the structure appears to have what's marked as a five-foot wide sidewalk in the parking spaces, of which is one, two, three, four, five, plus a handicap. Don't they pick my favorite wheel stops?
This is true.
Number one, why is the sidewalk five foot when typically we ask for six foot? So in fact, there is part of this one that's six foot.
Typically, the one that you see that's like interior to a site plan is, is five feet. We see that. I think you may be thinking about six feet sidewalks that are located within our right-of-ways as required by our bicycle and pedestrian master plan. But a lot of our.
That would apply in this case, Jennifer, because a five foot without a wheel stop, you're gonna have cars taking up darn near two feet of that five feet.
Okay, well, we can add that they put some wheel stops in those parking spaces. We can put a condition to, for them to add wheel stops on, in those parking spaces.
Will you get a look at it, or has it gotten past you already?
We'll have to inspect the sidewalk. So we'll have, we'll have final call on that.
Okay. Very good. Anybody else up here? Or down there? Yes, sir, can we help you?
I'm, I'm the civil engineer for the project, my name's Larry Smith. On the question of wheel stops, the ADA, the minimum ADA route is thirty-six inches. You're correct, a car will encroach two feet into a sidewalk if they come all the way up to. This one is a six-inch curb that's built into the sidewalk. So it does encroach two feet, which gives you the three-foot required ADA route. So that, that's the reason we didn't have wheel stops on here. So I just wanted to point that out.
Was there anything else?
Mr. Chairman, from me?
You're lucky we know who you are, because it's.
My name's Kevin Corcoran, and I represent the ownership of this property as managing member of the LLC. I do have some concerns about the condition three, the tree protection ordinance. I find an inconsistency in the tree protection ordinance where in seven one-five-five C one C, page six, that trees are, not a heritage tree, but a protected tree is allowed to be removed within ten foot of the perimeter of a residential structure, but not within ten feet of a commercial structure. And I question the rationale there, there's, I mean, this is a stick-built, identical construction to what a residence might be, but we're asked to keep these trees or remediate trees that are within ten feet. And I think that that's gonna be, that's gonna be problematic to keep those trees, because as Jennifer showed in the drawing, they, they, they branch out quite a bit. I understand the arborists will do that once the building's state. But I, I just question the rationale and why it's okay to remove a tree five feet from a residence, but not five feet from a commercial building when the, the fall nature is, is identical.
I agree. We'll let staff have a look at that.
Then I pretend.
So one of the, the, the tree protection ordinance, a, a really important part of this ordinance is the ability to get tree credits. So your multifamily and your non-residential developments, as we discussed in, in this presentation, you are able to get tree credits based on the, the protected trees that you're preserving. You get tree credits by using the tree credit schedule in Article twelve, which is in the zoning ordinance, in our landscape ordinance. So you're able to get tree credits by preserving protected trees. You're also able to earn tree credits by the, the three-inch caliper trees you're required to plant through your site plan process, your street frontage, your perimeter, your parking lot. So all those trees that a commercial, a, a non-residential development is required to plant are, are credited towards any trees that have to be removed. Single-family and duplex, they don't have tree credits available to them through the, the tree ordinance. So that's why they have some, some leeway in the ten feet from the structure and, and some additional exceptions that allow them to remove protected trees to give them a backyard, because they don't have the ability to earn tree credits like your multifamily and non-residential developments do.
All right. Doesn't help you, does it?
No. I, I, I thought that the rationale was in order to, you know, preserve those trees to the best possible. And we even discussed moving the building. And we even discussed moving the building at one point in time. But I don't see where that's allowed by the tree ordinance because it does not involve any heritage trees. We talked about moving the, the property line five feet, but it says you can only do that to preserve a heritage tree. And there are no heritage trees on the property. So we kind of, uh, kind of nixed that idea. I'd just like to see, I, I think that, the, the spirit behind condition three makes sense because otherwise we had to right now calculate what would be a twenty or twenty-five thousand dollar, uh, remediation requirement. But as we see, some of those oak trees are most certainly going to interfere with the, with the perimeter of the building. So we appreciate, um, the spirit of that in the arborist and Jennifer explained it to me earlier today. Uh, this condition was, was just announced to us this afternoon. So we appreciate that and we're fine with it. Um, if wheel stops are a possibility, I mean, we can certainly discuss. We have no problem adding wheel stops. The way I park my Silverado would probably be a good idea anyway. Um, so it's all good, but I just want to see us work together on condition three. And the trash letter is okay for the easement. I mean, that's less for me to push them, so I'm fine with that too. Other than that, I just want to tell you that staff has been incredible to work with, uh, extremely thorough and cooperative and very communicative and we're appreciative of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lee, did you have, it looked like you wanted to say something. No?
No, I will say something yet. I just, I want to thank, um, Mr. Corcoran as well because it, the, this is a, a work in progress, a tree protection ordinance, which we've made no, uh, bones about. Uh, the mayor has mentioned it several times. And this is one of the fir-, this is a very, uh, tree-dense piece of property. A lot of the trees are very mature and meet the requirements of a, a protected tree. Um, so it is, working with, with Mr. Corcoran is, has been, uh, a, a real kind of back and forth and trying to meet the intent of the tree ordinance. He mentioned shifting the building five feet for heritage trees. We have reviewed the cluster of protected trees as meeting the requirements of, or the standard of a heritage tree. Three, four, five, six protected trees that would equal more than enough, uh, diameter at breast height as a heritage tree. So we were working with him to actually shift the building to meet that intent of preserving those trees, even though they weren't technically a heritage tree. Um, so this is.
He was trapping to the two of you doing it the other day and over here.
Right. So this is certainly a work in progress and we will, I just want to, uh, give him my word that we will continue to work with them. Um, while this was a condition that was added, uh, late in the game. It was a result of their tree protection plan. This has always been out there, that these are the trees that would be remediated. We just wanted to make sure that it was in the conditions of approval so we could continue to work with this group and work towards preserving those protected trees. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anybody else? Anything else? Going on for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve Z eight, twenty-one, zero, 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 five, two, RE/MAX Gulf Shores as per staff requirements.
Second. We've got a motion and a second. Any other camera question? Uh, Mr. Brown? Pardon me?
Do you want to add the wheel stops?
Thank you.
Okay. I will amend my, amend my motion to add the wheel stops.
I will second that.
That's okay. Add it there.
Just for clarification, that, that's only the spots that run the building, correct?
Yep.
If they're, unless they're shown somewhere else on there already.
Yeah, but just the parking along the front of the building or where the sidewalk?
The sidewalk, yes, that's what that is. You know, the different terms, the sidewalk, right?
They're already, they're already shown.
Anyway, he'll get a look at.
They're already shown in the other, um, spaces.
Okay.
So we got a motion and a second. Any other question or comment? All in favor say yea.
Yea.
Is there anyone opposed?
I have one, I have one question just.
Yes, sir.
Are you opening a second office? Are you going to keep the other office or not? Not that that really matters, but I'm.
We plan to acquire Century Twenty-One and take over the world.
Okay. I've got such a, such a great location down there. I was just curious, you know?
Anyone out there wishing to address this board and hasn't had an opportunity to get onto our agenda? Apparently not. Other business. I'll bring up what I have in staff and commission. Which I guess is next since there's nobody regarding other business. Communications from staff versus planning commission. Next month, we're going to have an occasion that we've not had too often. That is, we will see a colleague of ours coming back because we're going to recognize the service that he put into this task for many years. Uh, I'll let you know as we get closer what's going on. Along those same lines, uh, we also would, or should consider having officer nominations next month prior to the, uh, election of officers in November. That's it for me. I'll remind you about that when you get your packets next month.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Do you guys have anything to bring forth, staff?
Uh, just, uh, just as, uh, Matt, uh, actually Matt may want to announce that we just finished a really cool community project, uh, down at the beach this week. Uh, I didn't know if you wanted, it's, uh, in your, 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 uh, department. But we're real proud of it. Um.
You don't lay work, so.
We have a covered structure over the, uh, covered shade structure over the Golf Place Playground.
Oh.
Something that's been requested for a couple of years, given the heat.
Yeah.
Uh, down there and the, the temperature, the actual equipment can reach in summertime. So it's something that we've worked closely with Matt, his department and Grant Brown.
I knew it was happening, but I didn't know you guys are finished, so.
Looks really good.
Get done, they're going to look at.
This year, we've been able to get both Meyer Park Playground as well as the Golf Place Playground covered.
That's great.
Folks that like to use that in the hotter months of the year.
Great.
Happy to hear that. Thanks for your work.
I have another thing along those lines, uh, Coastal Gateway, the forty-acre tract that, uh, the city owns. It's next to the Village of Craft Farms North. Um, the past week, we've had a public survey up online. If you go to the city's website, you just can search Coastal Gateway Park. Um, there's a public, uh, input survey about that park where we worked with Parks and Rec, um, to develop a concept plan that, uh, kind of, um, put together some of the, the elements and, and the ideas that we heard from a public meeting back in June for elements within that park space. And we've gotten five hundred and twenty responses so far.
Oh.
I think we're going to pull it down tomorrow and start to kind of finalize that conceptual design. That will, the first phase, uh, we're hoping to get into the budget for twenty twenty-two. So if we get a chance while it's still up and go online and take a look at that survey and provide some input for which ones see in that park.
Okay.
Um, another budget item that we've requested, you've heard us mention the city arborist. The city arborist has been the, uh, the updated tree protection ordinance. And we, uh, got a personnel request for a new city arborist that we've been, and, uh, community development. So we're going to play with these open, so keep an eye off for that as well. Harlan Harrison is, is currently working as the in-home city arborist and he may continue in that capacity. But, um, we requested that position with all the, you wouldn't believe how much time we've spent just on that, those live oak trees, on this case, property. And that's on a lot of properties. This is a real priority for preserving some of those unique qualities within the city. So, um, we've, uh, requested for an arborist to go to help us in those, uh, on all those properties.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody else? Pete?
With these trees, if they get knocked down during a storm, will the people have to put the tree back after? Okay.
Anything else? If not, motion for adjournment.
So moved. Second.